Well, welcome to Calumet Public School District 132. Where the session for additionation Calumet Public School District started at six oh five. Six oh four, I'm sorry, John, roll call.
Yes, Brown, absent. Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent. Kimbrough, absent. Love?
Present.
Story?
Present.
Harris?
Present. Place to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prove our agenda, suggested motion be adhered by move that the Board of Education approve the agenda for June twenty twenty four, run a session as presented. We have a motion. Moved by Ms. Story, second. Second by Ms. Dixon. John, roll call.
Yes, Brown, absent. Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent. Kimbrough, absent. Love?
Present.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, community board members. Uh, first, before I get started, I would like to introduce, uh, one of our guests. Uh, we have Mrs. Keisha James. Uh, she is here joining us this evening. She's actually one of my superintendent intern students from, uh, the University of Illinois Chicago. So, uh, you will be seeing her, uh, around having different meetings and, uh, events. Uh, this year, I have the privilege of having four interns, uh, two from the University of Illinois Chicago, and then two from Concordia University. The two from Concordia are actually two of our employees, Ms. Bates and Mr. Ivy. Um, so the process of their internship is really understanding how a district works from the superintendent's perspective, um, and really learning what it takes to do this job. So I'm really honored, one, to have the opportunity to serve as their facilitator, uh, but two, I'm also looking forward to their growth and then their contributions to our learning environment. So, um, the first thing on superintendent agenda is a Thornton Township Treasurer's Office update. Uh, I shared this information with the board, uh, previously, but I want to, uh, share also with the community. Uh, for the past four, maybe five years, I've sat on the statewide committee, uh, that look to bring reform to the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office is, um, probably about fifteen years ago, maybe a little bit more, uh, a law was passed in Springfield that all school districts in Cook County, um, had to fall under a municipal treasurer uh, for the sake of financial management, uh, of the district. And that came from years of issues, um, when this district didn't have a treasurer. So that's where we are now. One of the issues, uh, from the administrative perspective of the Treasurer's Office is that the Treasurer's Office is run by a three-member board. They're all elected officials, um, and they select the treasurer of their choosing, and then the treasurer manages the finances of the district. The, one of the challenges with that is the connection and the level of transparency between the district and the Treasurer's Office. And we've been fighting that for years. Um, the school district has no authority, say-so, opinion, voice, or whatever, um, in the Treasurer's Office, but they manage all of our money. And even in this district, we've had challenges from the board as it relates to, uh, the actual solvency of our district, as well as where is the money? Do we really have it? And all of that. So, we really, um, have been working for years to bring reform. So, the latest, uh, level of reform came through the Hundred Third General Assembly through House Bill three oh five, and the initial bill, as it was stated, was to totally dissolve the Treasurer's Office. Totally dissolving the Treasurer's Office, uh, for some is a, is a great thing, but for others, totally dissolving the Treasurer's Office really puts a bind, uh, and a hardship on the district. The primary function of the Treasurer's Office is to serve as the fiduciary, um, and sole money manager of the district. So, we don't actually manage funds, paper money here at the district. We account for it. However, all bank accounts, um, and receivables from the state or wherever comes through the Treasurer's Office. So, if you bring that role into the district, now you have to have someone who's over accounts payable. The, the money you send out, you have to have somebody over accounts receivable, the money you, you take in. Someone has to manage all of your assets. So, you have to have somebody who does risk management as well. You have to have somebody who's over payroll. You have to have someone, um, who does legislative work at the state level related to money. So, bringing that internal becomes a problem. So, back in January, when this bill was first pitched, it was totally to dissolve, uh, the Treasurer's Office. The, the working group, uh, at the state level, as well as almost every superintendent in Cook County, uh, we fought against it to have the language changed. And what we wanted the language to say is to give the district a voice and a choice. And so, what we've gotten the language to now say is that, uh, school districts will have a choice as to what their relationship is with a treasurer. You can totally pull out of the Treasurer's Office. You can hire your own treasurer, create your own treasury department in your district, and the legislation will allow it. Or you can go to any treasurer you want, um, based on your, your board's opinion. Or third, which is the recommendation that I support, the school district takes leadership, the school districts that fall under Township Treasury takes leadership over the office, and basically, it becomes a district-level board. So, what that means is, uh, we fall under, we're Calumet Township, uh, by boundary, but because Calumet Township is so small, the services have always been outsourced to Thornton Township. The larger district, more staff, uh, and it's a better return on investment for, um, investment of monies. So, what we recommended and what the law now states is that school, the Thornton Township will now become a member district board, very similar to how it is with the Special Education Co-op. Every district within the township will have representation, uh, on the board. The board will hire the treasurer, just very similar to how you do the superintendent. Uh, there will be monthly board meetings where decisions are made, documentation is discussed. Um, and essentially, it brings back a level, or it gives the district a level of onus over their money and accountability. So, um, I'm briefing you tonight just to let you know where we are in the process. Uh, this is not going to happen overnight, however, it will become, uh, a transition and a phase in. The elected officials on the board will be allowed to finish their term, if they have a, uh, year left, two years, three years. But one, once their term is over, they will not be allowed to run again. And then the goal is that, once all of the elected officials are gone, now it's solely a district-run board. So, I am, um, in favor of that model because it gives us exactly what we wanted as a district and as a board. Oversight, it gives us a voice, and then it creates a level of transparency that we did not have, if, uh, already. So, we, as we move forward in the process, uh, the law has been passed, both by, both houses, uh, of the General Assembly, uh, passed through the governor, and now they're in the process of creating the rules on how a rollout would be. So, as we move forward, I will continue to update you on what that looks like. Any questions?
Yes. So, what I'm hearing is that, once all of the, I guess, the board, they have a board.
Trustees.
Trustees. And then you said Thornton Township, that's where we are now. Um, there'll be a member district board, meaning?
Yes.
So, there'll be a, a district board. So, are you saying that somebody on this board, I'll just use our, our district, this board could be a part of that, or they have to be elected, or how does that piece work?
So, it, it will be very much like, how it's listed now would be very much like the co-op, the special ed co-op. You have a governing board, which is made up of one elected board member. So, basically, at the beginning of the year, when we elect offices, one of those offices that we would elect would be a representative to the Treasurer's Board. And then, so, the governing board usually meets twice a year, uh, and then you have the executive board. The executive board meets every month. They, uh, do the day-to-day operations, and that's made up of the district superintendent or their designated. So, it could be the superintendent or you senior chief school business official, one of the two. Right now, um, Bremen Township, they're the only ones who currently have that model. They've had that model probably thirteen, fourteen years, uh, and that's how it's being fashioned. Ms. Love?
Yes, uh, we do have two people on the board already for Calumet Township, and that's Mr. Rolletton, I can't remember the other guy's name, and Sheen is part of that board, but we're still sending, like you said, our monies to, uh, Thornton Township. And, you know, it's questionable to me, whenever our people meet quarterly, and their next meeting is July second at five o'clock over at the, uh, senior building, well, this building on Hundred Twenty-Sixth and, uh, Ashland. So, I will try to get over there at July second. But I'm looking at monies that are going out to Thornton Township, and we're not being told as to why this money is being sent over there, because it's like forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and it doesn't say anything, along with eight hundred and eighty-two dollars for purchase service, Chicago Tribune posting fiscal year annual statement of affairs. And that's two accounts. But the board has not been told about any of this least. Uh, I have not, let me put it this way, I have not heard about it. And it's two purchases for eight hundred eighty-two dollars. And then that four thou, forty-three thousand, one hundred eight dollars and seventy-five cents is a purchase services third quarter of T T S T budget. So, I don't know what that is because it has never been explained to me. But, um, so, all of this is kind of questionable because I don't know where the money is going or what it's for, and it's not in any reports or anything. So, we do need our own people so that we can talk to our own people, because we can't talk to Sheen and we can't, well, if we're not working with him, and he has already been, we roll that, if he, if we're not working with him, because, uh, Sheen is on another board, the whole board with the other.
Oh, diligence.
Okay, so.
So, I, I'll explain, it's, and, and I'm glad we're at this point. Let me just say that, I'm glad we're at this point because it's one of those things that it's a dinosaur. It's always been there, it's always been that way. And so, until something happens, you really don't talk about it. So, Calumet Township has two school districts, District one thirty-two, Calumet, and District one thirty-three, George Patty, right over the bridge of Riverdale. Because it's so small, um, we, Calumet Township could not sustain its own Treasurer's Office. You have to have all of these different positions to do all of the roles. They couldn't sustain their own. So, they outsourced the service to Thornton. Mark Sheen is the treasurer for Thornton Township. So, he manages our money, he's not on the board, he's the treasurer. He manages our money because we're outsourced. Basically, we pay them a fee to do the work for us. Every district has to pay a fee to the Treasurer's Office. And essentially, the fee to the Treasurer's Office, they take their annual budget, and they, and I honestly don't know the, how they come up with the calculation, but I'm sure it's based on district size, revenue, student population, and every district has a percentage that they owe for everything. So, I'm just gonna make up a number. We owe eleven percent of whatever that big budget is. We, our intergovernmental agreement that's been in place for ages, um, gives us what our payment is to them every year. So, what you see in the bill list is the payment for third quarter. Third quarter is January, February, and March. Now, that's something brand new. You have not seen that in the, uh, board packet. And the fact that you're seeing it means that our voice is being heard. In the past, the Treasurer's Office basically just did a journal entry to move the money from our account to theirs. Now, we've pushed them for more transparency. Send us a bill. Let us pay the bill so that there is a record, so that there is accountability and transparency of what's going on. So, that's brand new. So, when now when you see bills to Thornton Township, that's because they're actually invoicing us for the services that they provide. The Chicago Tribune, we have, we're by law, we're required to publish different things in the newspaper throughout the year. We have to publish the budget, the annual statement of affairs, uh, where we have our meaningful consultation meetings for, for grants, we have to publish that. Um, all of those, anytime you sell a bond or whatever, all of those things have to be published in the newspaper. And so, the annual statement of affairs, after your audit is done, they post it in the newspaper, and that's the cost of it. Depending on what you post and how long it's required to be posted, it may cost more. Um, so what you're seeing is really a good thing because it has not been done in the past. So, that's something that I'm proud to say that we've moved on.
Ms. Brown?
Uh, so what happens, so the, the intergovernmental agreement, I think, takes us through another year, which doesn't, it may correspond, uh, correspond to the, uh, length of time that, uh, we're going to be serving in Thornton Township. So, that's one question is what happens to the intergovernment, uh, intergovernment agreements and whether we still apply to it? And the second is that the opportunity to pull funds. So, the, the township also did some fun, um, some investing for us. What happens to the best practices of those then, uh, wh- where did it go?
So, the, when we, so when this new law takes effect, right? We're gonna have a brand-new intergovernmental agreement because essentially, you now have a new organization. So, the new govern, intergovernmental agreement will basically be the same, all but who the governing board is and what that looks like. Um, and then at that time, the, the treasurer will say, this is what every district's cost will be. And then, anything extra that you have to do, like newspaper mailings, or, uh, let's say that we, part of our audit, um, we, our audit is a single audit, that's what we pay for. However, sometimes you have to go deeper, right? That costs more. So, that's what they would charge us for. Um, but that would not take place until the new governance structure came into play. The pooling of funds, nothing changes. So, everything is, is documented, it's on paper, it's on the books. Um, if we decided to pull out of Thornton Treasurer and move to Glor or Bremen, then all of those funds would be transferred. If we decided to pull out the Treasurer's Office and create our own treasury department, then those funds would be fiduciary. Well, it's actually more legislation that has to go with that piece, but that will come back to the district, and then the district would be responsible for managing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, here and none. I will move to the, um, next report. Uh, I was asked by board member to give a synopsis of our first year of the strategic plan. I sent that out to, uh, it's in the board packet. And essentially, what you have is all three of our goals, and it's a color scheme, red, meaning no action. Yellow, we're making progress but not there yet. Green, task is completed and there, orange, the task is moving and it's ongoing. Uh, I am very proud of the work of our district administration over the last year as it relates to the strategic plan. Uh, I think we all learned a lot. We learned a lot about our strengths as an organization. We also learned about some areas where we might not even consider to that we needed to focus. So, uh, I won't go through all of it, but as you can see, board members, majority of the document, the task, are green and orange. And that's a good thing, that's where you want to be. We're on task of doing things. Um, those areas that are yellow, uh, we still are working towards it. Um, and a lot of things we could have said were orange, but we made it yellow because we were not comfortable with the level of progress that we made. I give an example, curriculum instruction. So, under goal number two, um, objective one, school leadership, provide high-quality instructional support on the implementation, uh, of a set, of a set of focus, culturally responsive, pre-K through eight best practice, and align curriculum framework through instructional coaching. Uh, we've done that in many ways, however, it's not the way we rolled out. So, one of the main, uh, parts of our instructional coaching piece was to hire interventions at each building. Uh, unfortunately, because of the teacher shortage, uh, I couldn't sleep at night if I had free teachers walking around with classrooms with subs in it. So, every teacher we get, you're going to the classroom. And although we're supporting classrooms, it still debilitates our ability to provide that immediate and one-on-one support. So, we are doing that in organic ways, uh, pooling students. Uh, we've worked very closely with our peer professionals in the buildings to, uh, provide them the support, uh, to provide those interventions. But again, it's not the same without a real interventionist. So, that's something we said that even though we've been doing it, it's not to the level where we want. So, as we move into year two, uh, and you will see in the org chart, we've made, um, some changes internally so that we could have interventionist support. We also, this year, will now have, uh, the district-level curriculum support, which we desperately needed. Uh, people who's actually in the field doing day-to-day professional development and coaching with principals, supporting I O Ts, um, and, and really just being an expert in that subject area. So, I'm really proud of my team. Uh, we talked about this the other day. Um, I was a little heavy-handed on them because there are some areas where I feel like we should be a little further along. Um, but I understand that with change, it takes time. And so, we're looking forward to year two of the strategic plan, um, really being able to do some damage in the district. So, I'm excited about that.
Ms. Brown?
So, thank you. Uh, hopefully not damage, but.
It'll do.
Um, so, proud of the staff for, for making this kind of progress. It's a nice way to be able to track, uh, where we are. Can you, perhaps just for everybody's identification, to talk about the link between the strategic plan and your budget? How, how did you all figure out?
Sure. So, I'll go back to the, uh, interventionists. So, we knew that that was something that we desperately needed, the human capital. So, when we budget, we had, we budget for those additional positions, uh, knowing that if you want quality people, um, a lot of times, those people are not in your district, so you have to hire them. And a person who's been in interventions, who has the experience of that support, they've been teaching a while, so their salaries are higher. So, you have to be cognizant of what you're bringing in as it relates to your budget. So, our budget, uh, and as I previously, previously stated, our budget is basically based on the tenants of our strategic plan. What's a priority? What exactly are we looking to happen? And then what supports and systems do we need to put in place to make sure it does? Uh, professional development is huge. So, we budget, uh, a nice amount of money for professional development because the reality is, when you talk about test scores, it's not about the students. It's about what's poured into the students. And so, we have great teachers in this district. We also have some teachers who need some support. And so, when you do that, it's not always just, hey, go read a book or go watch a webinar. Sometimes you have to put the support in their classroom to teach a lesson and play alongside with them. So, basically, our priorities lead where the budget goes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Considerogen items. I'm going to table, um, personnel items that are, uh, A one and A two. So, John, we're gonna, um, we're gonna.
Could we have a question on D? Just a quick question, I'm sorry. For D and D two.
So, we're just gonna hold on, A one, next, A, basically, A after two sessions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um. You wanna wait till we motion, and then you, you wanna ask your question, or?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have to hold on. If you, you just remove, we'll hold on those two, so.
Okay. So, D, you wanna move D two as well?
And E two.
And?
E two.
Okay. So, suggested motion be adhered by move that the Board of Education approve consideration of items. Letter B, C, E one, F, and G. You have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second?
I'm second.
By Ms. Brown. Question? Ms. Story? Oh, you want, okay. Roll call, John.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, absent. Kimbrough, absent. Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Items A, D, E one, F, and G, carry.
Thank you. No, that's. So, not D.
So, take, A, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me, let me restate that. Items B, C, E one, F, and G.
That's correct.
Sorry about that.
That's correct.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. I know. Action item. You guys wanna do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, in the consideration items, letter D. District Operations Service Contract Renewals Instructional.
So, so basically, with the con, um, with these renewals, I understand that we need, have you all to, um, do a deep dive in everything that, um, the usage of teachers and the usage of stuff?
Yes.
With this?
So, we've done, we started this probably in April. So, some of these programs, I'll give you an example, HAPARA, they're not necessarily student programs. They're programs that we, as administrators, or you have to have in place so that kids can't get to bad websites. So, that's something you have to have for that. But everything else on the list, we've gone and looked at the data. Uh, if you notice, this list is way smaller than it was last year. And that's because, excuse me, that's because we've actually looked at the data. How is it being implemented? Uh, is it being implemented with fidelity? Is this, when I first got here, one of the things I noticed is that if John liked it, he got it. If Johnny, if Bobby liked it, he got it. So, how are we looking at district-level protocols and programs for all of our students? So, everything on this list, um, has been, uh, reviewed. The Savis, Envisions, and the Savis My Perspectives Studies Weekly, those are all our general curriculum. So, that's basically, we purchased a three, four, five-year, whatever the contract was, but every year, you have to renew for the digital component, uh, whereas the students have the workbooks and all of the supplements online. So, these are not all just individual apps. A lot of them are textbooks, uh, they're part of our MTS processes, uh, and other information technology requirements that we have to have.
So, what about, um, I understand the rest. What about NearPod? Are they actually using that for fidelity? Because I know last time it was a cahoot, and I know that was free and that wasn't used fidelity. But NearPod, do all the teachers understand how to use it? Because it could be very, very instrumental in the classroom.
So, we've done a lot of P D around. So, that was the biggest thing. We had them, paying for them, three people in the district are using. So, we ask teachers, what is it that you enjoy the most? What's the bank, the biggest bank? And then all of these programs, which is something I love, they give you data. Everything is, it talks about, uh, frequency of use, the utilization, the growth from the beginning of the year to whatever time you monitor. Um, and this is what we've kind of boiled down as what's part of our main program.
Okay. That's why I was just trying to look at that, um, NearPod, so I'm hoping that, I would like to, you know, over the course of the year, to see some data of that usage. And then, I know, I seen that it was some add-ons with using like the encyclopedia and things of that nature. It was for, let me get, it was an add-on, I, I don't think it was Amplify. It was, one second. It was just add-ons, I'm just saying, the use of, based on the internet and all the different resources we have, it was just add-ons for, it seemed like the tonica for the, um, encyclopedia piece.
So, is that Myon? That's Myon, so, that's Myon. So, in the Myon, it's, Myon is the big name, and then you just add all the pieces you want to.
Okay.
So, it's not like it's a new program. It's just, these are all of the things we've added to our docket for Myon.
Well, once again, just keep the, the usage of that to see because the internet is a plethora of resources, but if we add those, and we're not using those encyclopedia, those resources, they're wasteful. That's all I have to say.
And to follow, it would be nice to have this conversation perhaps in April so that we're not having to in June, so we make a decision about a quarter of a million dollars. That, I, it'd be nice to have some data, have stack coming in, and I, if I didn't do it on the docket, I may have asked for it earlier, but it would be nice. But it would be nice to have a presentation from staff to get a better sense, cause it it's it's come up a couple of times. Um and and I think we we got a report once, maybe two years ago. Um and I'm taking ownership for that, I didn't ask for it either, but I'm wondering if perhaps we can do this into a presentation come April or or March of next year.
Sure.
It's Mayon, is that the one that uh for the reading?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we uh they did a presentation.
Correct.
For the um for the parents, right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes. All of the resources that the students have, the the libraries, the encyclopedias, uh elements they use for research, so yeah. So we have done it, uh but I hear you, it can be more consolidated so that we can see. The reason we wait till June is because this is where we get all of the renewals.
Okay, thank you. So may I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Story, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown, roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar absent, Kimbrough absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item D, Carrie.
Thank you. And E two.
Basically, it was just a comment because I know that triple I's in November and you have, so you have um triple I's eleven twenty-two through eleven twenty-four. Um and it says the board meeting will be Monday?
Tuesday, November eighteenth.
Monday, November, couldn't it, okay. So it's Tuesday, okay, I put November eighteenth, it's on a Monday, not Tuesday. That's what I was doing, but you can't think out of there.
That's that's correct, so it's it's for the Tuesday, so it should say November nineteenth. The day is wrong, so the correction is nineteenth, and that just follows what we've done in previous years, meet on Tuesday before the conference.
So is it possible if we can do that Wednesday, November twenty, I'm asking the board? But I know the conference Thursday.
That's.
That's too tight.
Yeah.
Well, what about that Monday? Cause I know I'm looking at, I'm just saying, I won't.
Monday is the eighteenth, the third Monday.
Is Monday is good? Ms. Love?
This is a Monday is good.
Okay, so that's what?
Monday, no, Monday, November eighteen.
November eighteenth is Monday.
So may I have a motion to move November's meeting, the third Monday, right?
It's the, it's the calendar.
It's the calendar.
It's the cap, okay.
So he, board, if I could, I would make the recommendation that we uh, once we get closer to that time, we've changed the date for uh November, just in case schedules change.
No, I'm just saying, I understand it. And you can't make this date.
Okay, do we leave it as to be determined with that, the November meeting? So the motion uh will be uh making a change.
Except the.
Except the calendar, um with the change. For November's meeting. Will be determined. So may I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon, second.
Second.
By Ms. Brown. Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar absent, Kimbrough absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item D two, Carrie.
Thank you. Seven A, approval of adopt, approval to adopt twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district budget. Suggested motion be hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the adoption of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district budget as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Brown, second. Second by Ms. Dixon, question?
So just uh before we vote, I'm just gonna go on record that I have historically voted against the budget. Uh even though I know it's tentative, I um have always had some concerns about how we, what would, where we place priority in terms of spending, so this year will not be an exception. I do believe that we could spend less as a board and um that that when possible, that we spend more on teacher salaries and support. So I am just noting that I gotta note on the budget for those reasons.
And and Ms. Brown, we we've had this conversation, the board, I truly respect your uh perspective on that. The only thing I would say is is we talk a lot about moving the money to teachers. Uh when we talk about teacher salary, let's remember that's something that's negotiated between the union. And at this point, we will not be able to change that for another two years. Uh but how we budget does go directly to teachers, students, and the priorities of the district. Uh I think it's important to point that out because just because the money is not in salary doesn't mean that it's not supporting teachers. So supplies and materials are huge, so the teachers don't have to come out of their pockets. Uh professional development, um that's a big thing. Providing the teachers with the support like Mayon and all of those other instructional supplements, that's where money is spent. We also spend a heavy deal of money on technology. You can't run a world at this point without technology, as well as recognizing that the cost of insurance and benefits goes up. So every year, that number keeps going up, and so we have to put money to that. So it may not direct teacher impacting, excuse me, it may not directly impact teachers and their salaries. But what's important to teach them what they need to teach and do their job, it does impact them.
May I have a roll call?
Yes, Brown? Dixon?
Yes.
Golar absent, Kimbrough absent, Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Um, it's, you know, this, it's really not, we're not gonna be.
Well, can I, can I ask a question? So I I I've asked the same question, I think this is my third year in the role asking this question. So I understand that board members have their personal perceptions and feelings about the process, which is the state's process, not our process. But when we vote to not approve the budget, we essentially vote to shut the district down. And so as a superintendent, I have to make the recommendation that you reconsider this because I can't pay payroll, I can't pay benefits, technically July first, I don't have a budget, I can't open school. So I would truly ask you all to reconsider your vote.
So can I, can we have a re-vote or, I mean, is there something that you guys wanna change? Cause I mean.
Well, I just need an explanation, whenever I looked at the budget, I saw a million dollars for other.
Can you show me where?
It is so small. And I did make it larger. When you go to the website. And I was trying to find it.
Actually looking at, it's the um checkup. As far as the budget, it's, as far as I do understand, by the, it's the July first date. And within the state, we have to have it that our budget in, in the.
It's the first quarter of the fiscal year.
The first quarter of fiscal year.
The end of the first quarter was just September.
It's September, so if the budget is not passed today, then what? I mean, can we still pay the bills and payroll once?
Yes.
So you can. So you have it to September the first. Um September first or the thirty? September thirty to approve the budget and we won't get penal, will we get penalized from the state or anything? Cause we do not have that budget.
Tonight, it may not approve tonight.
Right, or, yeah, so we would not get penalized.
So can can I qualify that, Chris? So again, you you have to the first, the, so end of the first quarter. However, we're walking into a fiscal year with no budget. And the budget's been prepared, been presented, it's been put in the newspaper, we've already paid for that. Um and and I guess my question is, what would you like to see changed in the budget? As I presented, this budget was written really in a bare-bones fashion. If the change is we see less money in the board account than going somewhere else, then I think that's a deeper conversation that results in policy to say, board members can't travel, board members can't go to conferences. Um and from an administrator perspective, and I'm gonna use a word of a previous board member, it's not my job as a superintendent to stifle any board member from trying to grow. So what we do when we budget is we budget responsibly. Uh I can fervently tell you that this budget, uh the way it is laid out, um is not going to be a detriment to this district. Even with board members traveling, again, the reason I was able to cut the budget for the board by forty-five thousand dollars is because board members did not travel as much in the past. So this is a very responsive, so to speak, budget to how operations actually go. Uh I am confident that where we are financially, uh we're still in a good spot. I'm confident that we will finish the budget in the black, meaning we have more money, we brought in more money than we spent. And to be quite honest, board, it's not even about the budget, it's about your strategy on spending and how you manage the budget throughout the year. So uh I I firmly uh believe that we as a district and especially as a governing body, uh we have to to move forward, um we can't keep going back and thinking, like I said, this is my third year presenting the budget and we've gone back and forward and the budget never changed. The budget never changed, so I'm just asking if we could reconsider. Um so if we do not have a budget in place by law, tonight, we were supposed to pass resolutions to give the administration and the board authority to continue to pay bills uh without a budget. So we don't have that in place, uh which means that technically by law, we can't do that until we have a resolution. So I was not expecting the budget to not be uh approved, so we don't have those resolutions in place.
So I have a uh question, so what is it that um the board traveling got to do with the need, the budget, cause it's, that's not making a big dent? Is that, is that the issue here?
Well, I was just speaking of the one thing, Ms. Brown, just. I don't know what the totality of it is.
Okay, cause I mean, technically, that's not gonna make a a huge dent in uh giving teachers increase in their salaries, again, that's, that's a collective bargaining issue. That's something that the union bargained, that's something that the the district doesn't do. But at the same time, am I correct? As far as uh the union, um that's something that the union, when they bargain for teacher salary, that has nothing to do with with the, what, the forty-five thousand dollars that's was, was put back in the budget from the board budget. Okay, so I I'm trying to understand, so where is the issue at as far as budgeting? Like, we need to really have a conversation on how that looks, cause you're talking about board development. That's totally different, we have to have board development, without, without question, cause we wouldn't be able to sit here at the table. But I'm trying to figure out where is the issue at with the budget?
So Madam President, there, as far as the board, he just used that as an example.
Okay.
My thing is, I know we had a comment talked about the budget, but it's, it seemed like it's just rushed, he gave his presentation. Maybe we could just focus on, let's understand it, all of the budget and it's just one focal point. And and maybe that's what we could just try to do, that one focal point, just the budget itself. So we can all understand the budget. And I think that's what it is, cause when he presented the budget, the tentative budget, it was just the highlights. So it wasn't a deep dive into it, so I think that's, that's the issue, it's not, I don't know, I'm just learning from that, what you just said, but it's not that to me, and it's just, I'm speaking for me, just a little deep dive. So this budget can be passed, I do understand about the teachers, yes, that's the union. I understand that we did the CBA, all of those things, but just a deep dive, that's all.
I agree with her, because as a new board member, I am familiar with budgets from my previous jobs. But and I prefer, whenever, like I said, he did his presentation and stuff, but myself, when it comes to money, I like to go line for line. Tell me what this is for, why are we spending this? So that I can be informed, instead of just coming to the meeting and just voting, because I value my vote. And I need to know everything that's in front of me whenever it comes to a dollar sign. So that later on, if something goes awry, I don't want my name up there to my, yeah, you voted for it, so what's wrong? You know, and I can't figure out what was wrong because I didn't, I go through the budget, you know, line for line to say what, what we're spending on. So that is my problem.
So I agree, but we did have a meeting that we wasn't able to to uh to conduct, and we could've talked about that at the committee hall. That was one of the uh meetings that we could've went and discussed the the line item by line, am I correct?
Well, that's, that should be on the agenda too, as that committee as a whole.
Well, that was.
Cause that was, that's, that's one of the problems.
But that was, we, if we had a meeting that that day, we could've discussed that, but we didn't have a quorum. So but uh moving forward, I would hope that right now, where we at right now, the voting for the budget?
Was that on the agenda to talk about the budget meeting as a whole? Cause all I got was.
Yes, ma'am.
All I received was, will you be able to come to the meeting? And I didn't see what the topic was.
It it's always uh agenda sent out to the board, yes, ma'am, it was on there.
The the only thing I would like to add is that there's a, the the budget is a process. So we start the budget process in April, talking about it preliminarily, going through it. And then once we put the tentative budget on display in March and May, the budget is locked. And then the public, as well as the board, there there's a thirty-day period, uh whereas you have the opportunity to ask any questions about the budget. So I don't want the board to feel like, you know, it's shoved down your throat, you didn't ask. Uh I do understand that board members have varying levels of comfortability with the district budget. Uh but that's why we have that period to a public display, so that you can't ask and answer those questions. Um I don't think that uh in a board, we we could be here for eight hours straight. If we had to go, there's nine funds in the budget, and if you look, there's probably two hundred and fifty lines that we have to go through. So I don't think that uh necessarily would be uh effective use of time. However, when the budget is presented, um your salaries and your benefits, you can't change them at all. The eighty percent of your budget is salary and benefits and contracts, you can't change that at all. Contracts meaning uh your your debt, the bonds you have to pay, contracts like your buildings you pay, facilities. So in reality, when we write the budget, administration has very little wiggle room on how we spend money. Very little wiggle room. Everything is statutory. I'll give you a perfect example, the union contract allows every teacher three hundred dollars a year for supplies at their choice. So when we talk about supplies and materials, before I even uh decide we're gonna put new carpet down, I have to make sure I account for that for almost seventy-five teachers. And so again, what you see in the budget, most of it doesn't change because it's statutory based on uh our union agreement and uh longstanding contracts. So I have no problem discussing the budget to to tutoring or walking you through it. Um but again, there is a process of when and how that's done.
So are we moving forward with the votes or are we gonna um?
So I have consistently voted no, I did, I if you go back, I've consistently voted no for the budget, I don't know that I'm gonna change my position. I understand, it does speak to this, another gap that I feel like is surfacing, which is that perhaps we need, uh I I know this committee the whole, but uh maybe we need to think about going back to this committees, uh other finance or policy committee. Because it feels like that's what's happening, is that there's a gap. In those senses, when we don't have, when we don't have quarums and there's no need for it, we can continue to move forward with the business without having to have everybody present. So I do hope that we could put a conversation back on the agenda about whether those two committees might uh eliminate the the problem of always having to find a quorum uh to need to discuss.
I think transparency is is best, and that's key for everyone to have an understanding, so it's just not that. But um so if we're, roll call, John? Okay, okay, so, that's it, okay, we go to the next. Uh letter B, approval of school year, school, si- school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district organizational chart. Suggestion motion be hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district organizational chart as presented. May I have a motion? May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Brown, second. Second by Ms. Dixon. Question?
Question, really quick, the bilingual coordinator of the bilingual service, I see that's a new position on here. Um do do we have coordinator, I know she's in that role, but it wasn't necessarily out. Caligorides asked the coordinator, what was that role?
So we have a uh, so by the state law, every district has to have a bilingual director. And that. And that bilingual director is required to have a type seventy-five. Uh, for a long time, the district did not have a bilingual director. Uh, so there was a teacher who was, uh, given the role. Um, and it worked for what it worked for. However, uh, it's not working. Uh, our population for our bilingual students has greatly increased. We're about twenty-five percent, uh, bilingual population. And that number grows every day. We're bringing in new colors, uh, at sixth and seventh grade, who this is their first time in school. Like, not just in America, but in school and life. So when you talk about language proficiency, we have students in sixth, seventh, eighth grade who can't read at all, uh, in English or understand English enough to learn it, to read it. And so one of the other issues is that, uh, we don't have the instructional support for bilingual. Um, meaning providing teachers the support with lesson planning, providing teachers with the support of professional development, uh, best practices, we don't have that. And so we can check off a box for compliance to say we have a director, um, and there's no slight to the director. However, there's a gap. Uh, you need somebody in that role who speaks the language of the students, who's able to provide support for the teacher. Uh, one thing we don't like to talk about is that bilingual teachers, uh, and many rights need even more support than genia teachers, because they have their own language barriers. And so taking it from their native language of Spanish to put it in English and then to bring it back, that's a challenge. So the bilingual coordinator is the only new position I'm asking for. Uh, and that was really born out of our compliance visit from the state. We were deemed pretty heavily on not being able to provide instructional support, which is huge.
Okay, I have a question about the, um, chart itself. Will we get an update on, with the names of the people who are in these positions?
Yes, that's fine. We post it to the website, uh, but once the chart is updated, yes, we can.
Okay.
Okay, roll call?
Brown? Dixon?
Yes.
Golar absent, Kimbro absent, love?
Yes.
Story?
Oh. Good, yes.
Okay, Harris?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Let us see, approval of, is it Yonder?
Yonder, yes.
Yonder software education package. Suggested motion be hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Yonder education package in amount of, of the, in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented. May I have a motion?
So.
Moved by Ms. Brown, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Story. Question?
Yes, I have a question. Um, has there been any, any parent conversations about this person, process or purchase? Has the district had any conversations with parents?
Yeah, on the back end, we take the kid phone, cause they're in the classroom. But he, he, here's the reality, um, parents will tell you that I told my kid not to pull that phone out. Once the kid gets to school, they do what they wanna do. Um, and by virtue of that, it's becoming a major problem, especially here at the middle school. And so this, you may be familiar with the Yonder software. If you go to a concert or something, they give you a pouch, you put your phone in, it locks it, you can't use it again, uh, until you swipe out to leave. That's something that we desperately need in this school. Uh, I've recently seen, there's a, a YouTube page, it's old, but there's a YouTube page with all type of stuff going on in schools that kids recorded on their cell phone. That's a problem. Uh, it's a liability. And in many cases, the kids are recording things with their phones, we don't know about it, so we can't get in front of it. So in, instituting this, uh, process as a pilot here at Calumet, uh, we're looking at other avenues at Burr Oak. Uh, elementary is a little easier with the smaller children, but the middle school, they just, they always figure out a way. So from what we've, when we've talked to parents, they're in favor of phones being taken or restricted, uh, because it is a problem.
So real quick, so just explain the process once again. When they, when they come in, they have the pouch.
Mm-hmm.
Visual, they have the pouch, they put their phone in the pouch. Who keeps it? Do they keep it around?
The kid keeps the pouch.
So the kid keeps it around their neck or whatever?
No, you put your band or whatever, your pocket, whatever.
So they cannot get in the pouch until the end of the day.
At the end of the day, when you walk out, you hit the scanner and it unlocks your pouch.
Okay, so they'll have to go through the scanner and then they'll unlock the pouch then?
Correct.
What happens if a kid refuses to give you their phone to put it in the pouch? Have we thought that far yet?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that, and when we start reviewing policies, that the board will consider a cell phone ban policy. And the cell phone ban policy gives us as administrations authority to say, if you don't turn in your phone willingly or whatever, and then you refuse, or we find the phone later that you did turn in, then we can't discipline you. It's already part of our student code of conduct, but we wanna make sure that we have the authority. Now, there are some parents who say, that's my property, I paid for that, this, that and the other. But if there's a policy in place that says this is a, a cell phone free school district, then regardless if you paid for it or not, you still have to follow.
Okay, last question. If in fact, uh, say for instance, a student loses their pouch and another student picks it up, and then they walk out and it's all they doing is scanning. Uh, what, what measures are, are secured? Cause parents gonna call, my child lost my phone, their phone, and they yawned to pack, somebody picked it up or whatever the case. I'm just trying to think about all the avenues. I like the program, but I'm just trying to think of all the avenues, if you all had those discussions. Cause parents will come up and they will go toe from toe, like you just said. It, this, I'll pay for this, you don't pay their bill or whatever. So those are some of the things, um, with that.
We, we've had, and Mr. Rolletta, he can kind of talk a little bit too. We've had in-depth conversations because, and we laugh about it, you know, when the moms come up, they're acting crazy. But it's the exact same thing as if somebody steals your kid's phone right now. We told you, gonna bring you in the first place. Uh, and, and I really hate to sound like that, but cell phones have truly, truly, truly been a nuisance in this school.
It's just the districts a lot, yes, I understand.
So, so the question that I'm trying to understand is, um, it feels like we're kind of, so what's prevented us from having a policy already? Like, it seems to me like if we wanted to, if we built very strongly about this, why, why haven't we put the policy first? And then this intervention second? I, I, I'm just trying to understand the, the sequencing of it.
Well, the, the, I, I, can I be honest? The policy itself is not gonna do anything. The policy gives administrations authority on the back end. They're still gonna slide it through, you know, um, they're still gonna bring it, they're still gonna, I've seen kids throw phones, uh, outside, and then when they go out for recess or something, they'll grab it. The policy itself works with adults. That's not gonna change anything for kids. The pouch is what's going to deter them from using a phone in school. Kids don't care about the policy. Kids don't care if we say, don't bring your phone. So the po- the, the pouch is really a deterrent to keep them from even wanting to bring it.
I, I, I would have to agree, because this is a disturbance to an instructor in the classroom who is trying to teach the children. And when the child is in the class and they're having their cell phone and they're doing whatever, playing games, texting each other, taking photos, videos. Again, I've seen these kids, things on Instagram. They have recorded, they even got Calumet, uh, the kids got a Calumet fight thing. And they're recording each other, sleeping in the, in the cafeteria and doing all kinds of stuff. So let's, let's be realistic. Allow us to do what's best for the people that's trying to help our kids. Yes, we try to protect them and we do all what's necessary, but at the same time, it's a disturbance and we have to put something in place. Cell phones are for emergency use, not for just come to school and just be a dis- a distraction. And so I, I agree with this, but if they're not doing something positive with these cell phones and stuff, it, it's just a mess. So, um, that, that's pretty much all that's left.
I, I agree. I, I just was, you know, those questions that, that come, that will arise. And also, um, I said, give it a try, it's just for Calumet, correct? And it's just a pilot to see where we are and just, um, provide the data for it. And another thing, I know what you said, um, board president. However, I, I don't know if we there yet, but the creativity using cell phone as a part of technology and the creativity of using those cell phones and having those cell phones as clicker. But we're not there yet, we gotta get the problem under hand, I get it in control. But I was just saying, as teachers and the creativity for the uses of the cell phone, if they use it in a positive way, then we have to also consider that. But yes, I, I, I am for it, for the, for the pilot and to get some data on it, yes.
Okay, is there a possibility to move this to next month? I would feel much comfortable at least having an opportunity for parents to weigh in. Uh, at least, like, they know that is now being discussed. Um, if not, that's fine, I'll vote no, um, for their reason. But I just feel like, I, I, and I hear the need for educators, I, I, I had two in one and I, I, I don't like, uh, um, cell phones in my classroom either. Uh, but this feels like I would at least like to be as transparent as possible to allow whoever needs to know that this is about to happen to be able to weigh in. And I don't know that that, like, for me voting on it tonight, doesn't feel like I've heard enough from those people that are gonna be directly impacted by this to say, yes, we should pouch it.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Dixon. I wanna say this, most of us can't use phone while we're working, right? So what's the problem? I mean, I wouldn't, if I'm teaching, a kid have a phone, that's a distraction, period. Now, as far as parents are concerned, if you choose to give your child a phone, they should know, you should tell them what to use it. Not in school. Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar absent, Kimbro absent, love?
No.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Thank you. Public comments. If you intend to speak, please fill out completely a question and comments form and present it to the superintendent. No? Very good. New business, FOIA page, John?
No.
Uh, any board members report? Ms. Love? Ms. Story? Ms. Brown?
Uh, just that I attended alone with you on Saturday, a, uh, ISBA workshop for, uh, um, presidents of boards and potential board presidents. I do wanna, and will ask John during our, um, our session to make copies of a document that might be helpful around, um, motions and when to make them and how to make them. Um, it was helpful, it was also helpful to hear, um, how some school districts are, that the complex, the, the complexities of, uh, school board business increases and, and political climates, um, and I think our districts know different. Um, so it was interesting just to hear what other school districts are facing, um, and how they are managing, uh, things and trying to get ahead of controversies using, um, branding and, and, uh, marketing. Um, so that was, that's good.
Thank you, Ms. Br- Ms. Dixon. Well, again.
I'm sorry, we did go, I'm sorry, June six, it was a, a legislative, executive legislative, let us legislate to me. Um, so what was discussed there was, um, the way IASB, um, the way how they, um, what we're paying in our dues and also how they're controlling of what workshops we attend and things of that nature. So it was, uh, decisive point that they go back, um, when I say they, um, IASB representatives there. They go back and let them know that we want to decide the, uh, workshops we attend. And some of the, um, um, workshops we stated was audit. How, how we know when the audit, when the audit takes place, what to look for, us to look for there. Also, if legislative come in, we want to know, um, ask the legislators our sales questions, because IASB wanted to bring in some legislator, but we, um, did not have an opportunity to ask those questions when we went to the breakfast. And we didn't have an opportunity, they just talk, talk, talk and talk. Or when it was time to ask questions, they were saying, write them down, but they never came back to the questions. So that was a, a, another, uh, discussion there.
What's that?
That was, that was.
Who would let you speak?
Oh, when, um, it wasn't, it was at the breakfast, that breakfast was held at Rosa Park?
Yeah, Rosa Park, that's.
Yeah, right. That was, that was when all the legislators came, uh.
So the legislators didn't answer anything?
No. So a lot of people, um, for the, um, executive committee, they stated that it was just really a waste of time, cause we was just hearing. Some of the, the things were good, what they were saying and talk to your legislators about different, um, policies and, uh, bills that were about to be, uh, get passed or that they was discussing. But there were, they did not, we had a bucket, here's the questions, they never even pulled from it to even answer anybody's question. So it was pretty heated as far as what, um, South Cook wanted to do, because we have the majority, um, of the members, uh, with IASB. And so they was just coming, pushing back and saying, you're not gonna do this to us. Because, and then there was another, how they pulled out, uh, was in NSBA and then went to Costco. So they were talking about that too. That we're paying dues, but you are, IASB just decided to do this without bringing people, you know, and having a voice. So those are some of the things that, um, were discussed. And then it was some other, um, resolutions that is about to happen in, in November. And I just send the board that, um, through email, so I can have the right verbiage of what they said for the different resolutions. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the board president's, uh, workshop and it was awesome. I've been to a couple of them, uh, a couple of years ago and they wasn't as productive, uh, informative as well. But this time, it, it was very informative. Uh, it was very much, uh, open, a lot of dialogue, a lot of explanations, examples and so forth. So I think this time, that was very helpful. Um, also today, today, I had, Ms. Dixon and I, we attended Eisenhower's, um, groundbreaking. So they're getting ready to have a, a new, um, field house, which is phenomenal. I think they must've copied it off us, right? Yeah. So they, they were eager to, to try to have something as well, but it, it's gonna be fantastic, um, and it's really, it's just for the kids. And I, I love the fact that they have a lot of things going on in each component, from, um, sports, uh, musical, um, other activities and things of that sort, even drama. So they even have a nice theater, theater that's gonna be built. So, um, uh, kudos to them, uh, congratulations to them, but it was really nice. Um, and, uh, again, I, I wanna share that my daughter had her first opportunity to fight a forest fire. Um, uh, that was kind of intense, uh, intense moment that we, uh, she called us, but, uh, and I'm quite sure you guys heard it, there's a lot of other forest fires across from Canada, Texas and California, so. But, uh, just keep her in prayer, so she's doing her thing, girls rock. Um, so may, uh, we wanted to win Eisenhower co-op facilities, uh, cause I think?
So I'm bringing, uh, I'm bringing, I'm bringing this to the board tonight, because it will come back, um, in July for a vote. We are a member of the Eisenhower Special Education Cooperative through a intergovernmental agreement. They pro- they provide support, uh, for our special ed students that are not serviced here. And those programs are, uh, the more profound, students, deaf, hard of hearing, autistic, uh, behaviorally challenged. And so part of our intergovernmental agreement, we pay an administrative fee every year to the co-op for their services. And that administrative fee, um, and, this one, the administrative fee, if you see on the chart here, is broken, and this is in your board packet. But these are all of the districts, um, that are in the co-op. And again, it's very similar to how the treasurer's office is listed, a hundred percent of their overhead is borne by the member districts. So Calumet Park, um, we make up eleven point two percent of the co-op. And so, uh, our current, let me go back. Right, our current annual, um, membership fee for the co-op is one hundred forty-seven thousand and forty dollars. Now, that's part of what we pay for tuition. Uh, so it's, you pay the hundred forty and then you pay whatever else you have to pay for tuition. The co-op is, uh, growing by leaps and bounds, meaning there are more students than they have space. So, uh, the co-op is in the processes, process of selling the bond. So, uh, the Co-op is in the process, is process of selling the bond to create a addition at Spalding Elementary School, uh, inside of Midlothian School District 143. Uh, this process has been going on long before I got to the district. So at this point, they've come to the head where they're ready to actually move forward with securing financing, they have plans for the building, uh, and they're ready to move forward with the financing. Um, so they are looking to build twelve additional classrooms onto Spalding. Um, and overall, our students benefit from this program, they're already there. So I asked a question, um, and it, it kinda enlightened me. But the reality is that because we are a part of the Co-op, we essentially are responsible for whatever work is done, uh, improvements that are made, whatever the overhead costs are. Uh, so essentially, I'm bringing this to the board for approval in July. I'm gonna get to the right chart so I can show you. I'm bringing this to the board for approval in July as it requires a two-thirds vote of all member districts, um, to, uh, to pay. And so essentially, we pay a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars right now. They're looking to take a thirteen point one million dollar bond out for this project. And our eleven point something percent of that bond, uh, comes up to here, two million, two hundred, uh, five thousand dollars. So we currently pay a hundred forty-seven thousand a year. And then with this new debt, it's a fifteen-year bond, the new debt, here's the, the schedule of how it would be paid. And so, um, the difference is we would be adding for twenty twenty-five, which would be this upcoming school year, a hundred and five thousand dollars. So essentially, for the next fifteen years, it would be an increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, to the Co-op. And so the question I asked was, well, what if we decide we don't want to pay the increase? If we decide we don't want to pay the increase, then technically we, uh, nullify our agreement with the Co-op. We can't continue to send our kids to the school and we're not basically paying our part of the bills. And so essentially, uh, our new payment every year, uh, would be a hundred forty-seven plus a hundred and five. So that's about a hundred, two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars a year, uh, that we would be paying the Co-op for the next fifteen years. Um, so th- there's a few frames of thought around this, and one of them has always been, in my mind, the Co-op was never created to be a permanent fixture. It was created to provide a need, um, and the reality is that our students, their needs have become hurting. Uh, we get students who come in the door in pre-K. Let's, let's go back, we get early intervention students who are between the age of one and three, who come into the building with IEPs. And so by virtue of that, the number of special ed students we have and we service is continually on the rise. The severity of their diagnosis is continually on the rise. So students with, uh, autism, students with other developmental delays that we necessarily can't service here in the district, they go to the Co-op. Um, and unfortunately, we have to continue to send them there because we don't have the, uh, the staff, uh, the expertise, in, in many cases, the proper facilities to facilitate the learning for those students. So this is tonight, just for discussion and questions, I hope you have a lot because, uh, I really want you to understand this process. Uh, again, this is a dinosaur, it's always been that way, and you won't understand it or know about it, uh, until something happens. So we are at a point where we have to make, uh, a vote or decision to support the work that the Co-op is doing, which I, uh, and Dr. Harris and Ms. Bates would concur that they're doing an outstanding job, uh, with our students. Uh, we've had students to exit out of having the IEP, which means they've met all of the goals and targets in the IEP and now they're put back in general. Uh, we even had, I think, two students to come back to the district this year because they basically met all of their goals. Um, so it's incumbent upon us as a member district to ensure that the Co-op has what they need to survive.
Ms. Story.
So, um, how long do they stay in the program, meaning when they get into eighth grade, that, is that it? Or what, what?
So a kid's IEP goes until, what is it, Chris, twenty-two now? Twenty-second birthday, it's, it's, it's increased. It used to be to, to the twenty-second birthday, now it's to your twenty-third birthday.
They still have to pay until they?
No, once, once they graduate eighth grade and move to two eighteen or wherever they go, that's their responsibility, correct?
Um, another question is, um, is this the only Co-op? I mean, have you ever heard of Destiny Program? The Destiny, is that part of?
That's not, no, no. So there's a lot of private placements. Uh, you, if you look at our fields, Academic Mastery, Mentor, uh, ICAN Dream Center. We send kids to those other programs because the Co-op doesn't have space. And then unfortunately, there's a handful of kids who've gone to the Co-op and that didn't work for them. So the Co-op released them and we had to find a, a different place or a separate placement. Uh, but the Co-op is the, the government school district where our special ed students go. Everything else is a private company.
Okay, another question, so?
Wait, make Ms. Story, Ms. Love, you have?
No, she can finish.
No, if we, what we do, we gonna make sure everybody has an opportunity, so.
How many students do we have at Spalding?
Um, I don't have that in front of me directly. Uh, I would have to get that from Dr. Harris. Uh, but total, we have, I wanna say forty-six students altogether that are separate placements.
Okay, and how many pla- how many facilities do we use? I know you just named them, but I wasn't counting.
All right, so you have the Co-op. So I, Eisenhower Co-op, and, and Eisenhower Co-op, there's multiple facilities. You have Spalding, um, you have the place over at Alsa. There are different facilities with, across districts. Uh, but privately, we have Mentor, we have, uh, ICAN Dream Center, Academic Mastery, um... Ms. Bates, what's the one on Ninety-Fifth Street? It's not on there. What's the one we went to, Ninety-Fifth off Cister Road? Huh?
Ms. Bates.
The, the, yes, the DFP, I'm sorry. We send students as far as to just north of Midway Airport to Mentor. So it's about five to six different programs we utilize. Because of the size of the Co-op and the pending timing, space, we have to use those private places.
Ms. Dixon?
Uh, yes, I have a question. Now, for each kids that's, uh, attending these programs, do they pay, do you actually pay the same for each individual child, or is like different prices vary?
Depending on the program that they're in. So let's say a student, uh, have profound disabilities. They were non-verbal, um, wheelchair-bound, they may need a one-on-one pair professional. So essentially, our cost is tuition for the program. We have to pay the salary of the one-on-one professional. Let's say they need occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy, all of that's wrapped in their cost. So no individual student in special ed has the same price.
Now, I have a question, I'm concerned about one individual that's in special ed. And I wonder, if there's possible, without calling any names, could I, we find out just how much we're paying for this particular kid that's going to another school?
If, if you send an email to me, we can look into that.
Okay, cause I would like to discuss it at the next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Story.
Um, question, so is the two hundred fifty-two thousand budgeted in our district budget?
Yes.
So you had already budgeted that in our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I think we, we would be doing ourselves a disservice if, if we don't, um, uh, pull into this, continue to pull in with Eisenhower, am I correct?
I, I'm not sure if a disservice is the right word. It, it's probably, we're going prison, maybe, we're going against our contract or our IGA in some aspects. So the, 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 the intergovernmental agreement basically states that you're in it, there's a, for how long the IGA stands for. And then it talks about if you pay your administrative, it's called a housing fee, you pay that every year, that's your bill to them on top of all of your tuition and services. And so if we decide to not participate in this, essentially, our students would not have a seat.
And that's, that's what I'm, and that's what I'm saying, that is a disservice.
So the, the, it's been approved by the executive board, yes. And the next step is that it has to be approved by two-thirds of the member districts. Now, here, here's the catch, and I asked this question. If two-thirds vote yes, we could say no, the motion still passes. So because we're locked into an IGA, the motion still passes. So, um, I try to look at things on a positive side. This is a benefit for our students and our district because they're being provided the support.
So, um, so where are we with special education classroom in this district? Cause I know we do not have a regular self-contained classroom.
So we will.
Yeah, so we're working on it?
Yes, but again, the students at the Co-op are, in many cases, more profound than what self-contain is. So you're thinking, thinking about your behavior students, uh, we have deaf, hard-of-hearing students, we have autism program, uh, we have the developmental delay, that's a huge program. And those are your younger K-one-two, um, a lot of them have medical issues that contributes to their, uh, developmental delay. So us creating self-contain is really more of a proactive approach looking forward. How do we grab the students here and provide them the supports, uh, earlier so that they won't need that level of support that the Co-op provides? But overall, those students at the Co-op, they're there for a reason, correct?
So number ten, closed session. Motion to exit to closed session. We hereby move that the Board of Education go into closed session for discussion pursuant to section two, C-three of the Open Meetings Act to consider the reasons established or filling a vacancy on the body, public body, information regarding appointment, employment, or dismissal of an employee, or officer contracts, grievances, negotiations pending, threatened, or imminent litigation, real estate, student discipline, superintendents, and/or board evaluation performances. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Story and may I have a second? Second by Ms. Dixon. Roll call, John?
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, absent, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried seven twenty-six P.M.
So motion by Ms. Brown, second?
Second.
Second by Kimbrough, I mean, uh, Dixon.
Paul Brown?
Yes.
Um, Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Yes.
Story? Yes. Harris?
Yes.
What time is it?
Nine oh five.
May I have a motion to reconvene? Wait. The camera?
Camera's on.
Okay. The camera been on all the time?
Nah, I just turned it on. Don't you scared?
Yep. The camera, okay. Mo- motion to reconvene?
You're over there for a session.
Oh.
For session eight, ten, nine, nine, nine oh six? You got a little roll call?
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, roll call.
All right, uh, Brown?
Yes, President.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, nine oh six.
So going to vote on, uh, personnel, A-one, A-two.
Isn't it different, um, only based on, uh, what we said for the closed session?
Yep.
Yes, motion approved, letters A-one, A-two, as modified, as discussed in closed session.
A-one, A-two.
As modified?
As modified, as discussed in closed session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dixon? And second by Ms. Brown. Roll call, John.
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Wait.
What?
Wait. So, let's see.
You said no, closed session, that's not, it was modified in closed session.
So that still goes, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We, we go ahead.
Okay, uh, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Um, yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, items A-one, A-two, carried as modified, as discussed, in closed session.
All right. May I have a motion to, uh, John? Moved by Ms. Story, second? Second by? Roll call, John.
All right, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough, absent, Love?
Yes.
Story?
Uh, yes.
Harris? Motion carried at nine oh eight P.M.